President.
Lauren Berman. Daniela Devine.
Present.
James Godwin.
Present.
Chris Redfield.
Present.
Greg Wright.
Present.
Commissioner Wright, could you lead us in a salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is my first time chairing, so correct me if I get anything wrong. Before we get into administrative business, any member of the public wishing to make public comment on any item should complete a speaker card and bring it to the front and hand it to staff. On the card, please indicate the agenda item number on which you wish to comment or oral communications for items not on the agenda. Members of the public may also participate in the meeting via Zoom or by the dial-in options shown on the screen. Phone number is 669-900-6833. Once dialed in, enter conference number 811-5615-8241, and then press the pound key. Once I announce the public comment opportunity for the item on which you wish to comment, press star nine to raise your hand if dialing by phone or the raised hand function in Zoom. If dialing in, once identified for your turn to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Wait a few seconds and then begin speaking. Be sure to mute any other broadcasts you may be watching, such as the Channel 26 or livestream. I will call each speaker, whether in person or by dial-in, for their public comment opportunity. Okay. I have an announcement for the beginning of all public comments. Public meetings are a limited public forum, meaning that there are rules for commenting at these meetings. Comments on non-agendized items must address matters within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Comments on agendized items must relate to that specific item. If comments do not fall into one of these categories, the city will provide you with an initial warning to stay within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the city or on topic. If the warning is not followed, the chair will direct the city clerk to cut off the microphone. And throughout this warning system, I will seek the assistance of the city attorney in identifying comments not related to the agenda item or not within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the city. Not seeing any approval of minutes or designation of liaison to the city council meeting for tonight. That brings us to oral communications. Do we have any public comment related to oral communications?
There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay, I'll close the comment period for oral communications. No consent items tonight, so we move to our first new public hearing, which is PSD-864-23, 1080 Valencia Way addition PSD, recommended sequoia action class one categorical exemption, SEQUA guideline section 15301. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening, commissioners. My name is James Lynn, Associate Planner with the Planning Division. I'll be presenting item number one on tonight's agenda for a site development permit for an addition and remodel at 1080 Valencia Way. The subject site is located in the Lindamar neighborhood and is zoned for single-family residential with a low-density residential land use designation. The proposed addition requires Planning Commission approval of a site development permit prior to the issuance of a building permit because the proposed addition results in the floor area, which exceeds the floor area maximum under the formula specified in the city's municipal code. So in the formula on this slide below, they, it shows that they are exceeding the total maximum, which is at 3504, or 3524. Here are the existing site photos of 1080 Valencia Way, and here are the existing neighborhood photos of the surrounding parcels. And here is the site plan of the existing and proposed condition. And the proposed site has a lot of 8,648 square feet, and the proposed project will include the construction of a 3,270-square-foot first and new second-story addition, as well as a 43-square-foot front porch and 27-square-foot garage addition to the existing single-story 1,138-square-foot residence. And going back, the photo accompanying this slide is the rendering of the proposed addition provided by the applicant. And here is the existing and proposed ground floor plan. The highlight of this indicates that the existing ground floor plan shows a 1481-square-foot addition, which will include the addition of a new den, bathroom facilities, as well remodeling of the existing kitchen, and the redesignation of a great room from a family room and a master bedroom. On the proposed second floor, it identifies a new 1,788-square-foot second-story addition, which will be comprised of four bedrooms and two bathrooms. The next slide is a height and massing diagram of the proposed site with their current neighbors. And this slide indicates the landscape plan where the applicant proposes to add and renovate the existing landscaping on the subject site with 367-square-foot front and 1,623-square-foot rear yard planting of bolero and delta bluegrass blend. The project also includes the planting of eight trees and 58 shrubs throughout the site. The applicant proposes to enhance the non-landscaped areas of the site through incorporating fine granite and flackstone pathways, and the proposed landscaping would increase the total landscaped area from 9% to 23%, which would bring the subject site into compliance with the current code requirement. And here is the plan sheet for the proposed color and material board, which consists of a mix of horizontal cedar wood siding and stucco finish wall in sonnet by Benjamin Moore and the charcoal composition shingle roof. Staff has reviewed the submitted application and recommends the Planning Commission find the project exempt from California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to SEQUA guidelines, section 15301, class one exemption, approve site development permit PSD-864-23 by adopting the attached resolution, including the conditions of approval in Exhibit A, and incorporate all maps and testimonies into the record by reference. And that concludes my presentation. The applicant representative and homeowner are both in attendance this evening, and I believe the project architect may also be available via Zoom for their presentation. Lastly, a public comment submitted by the applicant prior to the 12:00 p.m. deadline, which includes seven signatures of immediate neighbors on Valencia Way stating their support for the project was received and provided to the commissioner this evening. Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but you typically do seven minutes to the applicant with three minutes for rebuttal?
Yeah.
Floor is yours.
Great. Well, thank you, James, for a great presentation. Actually, I don't have to do any work. Pretty much summarize what we try to do. I think our plan is very clear as far as presenting that we are adding first and second-story addition to accommodate a family of eight, which I think they want to make a statement prior to my answering any question you may have. And also, our grading drainage engineer Travis is on Zoom to answer any question related to drainage.
Thank you.
Okay. We have lived here in Pacifica and at our current address. Okay, we lived here in Pacifica and at our current address at 1080 Valencia Way since I was born, so 38 years ago. We love it here. The community is awesome. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. So the reason why we're asking to build the addition is because, as you know, Latino families were really united. And for us, we're all here and we don't want to leave. We are blessed to have my grandmother, who's 88, who suffers from dementia and Alzheimer's, living with us. So as you know already, we're a big household, and adding one more, that's why my dad, who has worked hard his whole life, we're trying to give him the dream. We... Okay. So that's why we have come up with a plan to see if it is allowed to go ahead and with our us, so we could keep it together and we don't have to leave. Because as you know, everything's expensive out, and it's hard to be on your own. That's all I have. Thank you.
I forgot to mention Mr. Gomez also went around and spoke to some of the neighbors, and I think we submitted seven petitions signed in support of this project. That's all.
Thank you very much. I guess I can bring it to the commission for commission communications before we open for oral communications?
I have a couple of quick questions. In terms of height, could you speak a little bit about the height requirement? I know you were, according to the zoning rules, allowed up to 35 feet. Could you just reference what you decided to do and just tell us a little bit more about it?
As far as the proposed height? James, can you go to page sheet eight, four? Okay, so this is the front elevation of the existing on top and proposed on the bottom. We are stuck with the existing finished floor elevation. I believe at approximately maybe five feet above the gray. And I think there's an error here. It shows the existing sitting height at eight foot one, but in reality, we like to raise that up to nine feet. And upstairs, nine feet down to eight feet. So that's our thinking in terms of the sitting height. And the roof pitch is only four and 12, so it's not very steep roof pitch, which actually bring up the mass and bulk. And we try to, you know, articulate the exterior with the in and out, so with different roof shape and forms. So I'll let you answer your question.
Did I interpret it correctly that you're about five feet below what the maximum that you are allowed? You didn't, you didn't, you didn't try to max it out?
No, we didn't. No, I tried to refer to the existing finished floor elevation of the main existing is actually about five feet higher than the exterior gray, where normally on a flat lot, you don't have that situation.
Okay. And then, did you consider solar or any other energy-efficient considerations?
I thought that was part of requirement now these days. Yeah, so, yeah, definitely.
And am I correct? Are you putting tankless hot water heaters in as well?
Yes.
That's all the questions I have for now. Perhaps after public comment or deliberations, I may have a few more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I've got one.
Could you?
Okay, good evening.
Hi.
I've noticed that most contractors suggest new construction. If a remodel adds more than about two-thirds to the original house, and because it typically costs 10 to 25% more to do a remodel than to do new construction, and you can bring a house down in two days with a Bobcat, you know, one to knock the house down and one to dig up the foundation. And it's, you know, there's a fair amount of risk with a house that was built in 1959 like this one, that there's some framing and issues or foundation cracks or any something of that type. And when the county comes to assess the property tax, they're going to treat this like a new house, so the taxes are going to go up substantially, just as if it was a new build. And you also, if you would choose to sell it in the future, it's, you're going to have to quote it as a 1959 house, which is, you know, going to tend to reduce the price you're going to get for it at some distant point in the future, if that becomes an issue. So I guess I'm not sure why you're doing this project this way, and I'd like a little more of an explanation of why you're doing what most remodeling contractors, they look at a house 30 years old and say, "Don't remodel it." Why are you taking this approach on this project is my real question.
Excuse me. Well, I think we initially met with Mr. Gomez on this project. He mentioned he just wanted to expand and add a second-story addition. Sounds very simple. But over, because due to pandemic, you know, it took a while to change the plan, update, revise the plan, and things get constantly expensed, expanding, excuse me, to where we are right now. And I agree with you that it probably is cheaper to rebuild because the fact that the existing foundation is not built to accommodate, you know, future second-story. The seismic, you know, the sheer walls were not designed also to accommodate seismic loads. So can I ask a question to the planning staff? If we decided to call it brand-new, do we have to come back to the meeting, planning commission meeting? Or is it something that staff can approve, assuming we kept the design, but everything would be new? Zach?
I'm happy to step in and start answering that question that I'm going to ask your planning staff.
Okay.
You would require, you would be required to submit a new application and a plan set and go through, you know, the process again.
Okay, can we, for example, getting, paying a planning approval tonight? But during the building plan check process, we proposed that all walls going to be brand-new?
That would be a new project. You would likely have to come back through the process to add plans.
All right.
Anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
Does the, does the Gomez family plan on living in the existing structure while construction is ongoing?
I don't believe so. It's impossible to live there.
Okay. I just figured if for any reason there was, you know, why we wouldn't knock it down and start fresh if that had something to do with it. I know that putting a project before the commission is quite expensive. So I understand that, you know, it might not be practical to start over. I just was curious.
I think we had a discussion on this, why you didn't start from scratch, but.
My name is Salvador Gomez.
Hi. I just was curious, and I understand this, I understand you probably weren't planning on living there during this much construction, but is that, was that a potential for why? You didn't want to just knock it down and start fresh?
I thought it was just more money after, you know, to spend more money. And when I, when he showed me the design, he told me wasn't doing it back, but he looked like a stash box in the back. So we, he decided, and I decided that the house looked like a, like a new house, but a nice one in the front. I mean, and big enough for my family, you know?
I understand, yeah.
And I know it's going to be expensive, but also we're not, I don't know if you say something about living in there or something or selling it? No, I'm not planning to sell it, as long as I live, you know? Not planning to sell the house.
Sure, understood.
So I also like to add that when we initially started this project, this is back in 2021, where I remember the construction costs were very, very high compared to today.
Sure.
I believe everything has came down a lot, including material and labor. So anyway, I hope we answered your question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, or I've got one? You mentioned that your, I don't know if it's your civil engineer or someone who designed the drainage was on the line.
Yes.
Is it possible to ask a question of him? What was his name?
Travis, Travis.
Travis, I'll ask my question, and then you can use your raise hand function. Going through the proposal, I'm seeing that it's an existing non-forming side, non-conforming side setback. It appears on both sides. And then a new non-conforming lot coverage. So I was just wondering, because going through, I can see your sort of details, but I don't see a real marked-up plan of the, kind of the overall drainage plan. You're going to have a lot of drainage to deal with because of the additional square footage and hardscape, and I'm just hoping you could provide some detail on the overall plan for dealing with the water on the property.
Yeah, can you, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
So I think my, the civil sheets were part of the, the package on that. So maybe, I'm not sure if James could put up sheet C2 by chance? If not, I can explain it. But because it's a fairly flat lot and we do have positive drainage to the street, we're basically grabbing the extra downs, or all the downspouts. And then we have a large dry well that's located in the front of the house, in between the house and the street, where we're trying to drain most of the water into, trying to, you know, percolate into the ground and recharge the water table. And then there's an overflow that takes that water to the street in the event that there's, you know, a larger storm event than the 100-year storm event, or, or there's some sort of, you know, clog in the system, then there'd be a natural overflow to the street.
Is the dry well and percolator system designed for 100-year storm charge?
It is. Yes, yes, it is. Can you hear me?
Yep, we've got you. I appreciate the information.
Oh, no problem.
Could I ask a quick follow-up question? Is, is the driveway stamped concrete or is it semi-permeable?
Right now, the driveway is proposed to be a non-permeable paver. And that's just basically, usually we try to limit permeable pavers on a slope less than 5%. So in this case, the driveway is actually quite steep. As James Chu pointed out, you know, this it kind of sits fairly high on the lot. And with that comes a pretty steep driveway that, that is about 15% on one, one side and about 8% on the other side. So it's, it's steeper than really the specifications for a permeable material.
Thank you.
Travis, could you, one more follow-up question? The, I guess the left, left side of the house from the front, I'm assuming that is the, the west side. I'm seeing a concrete walkway, kind of what looks like all the way to the property or fence line. Is there any plan for allowing permeation of the water on that side of the house?
At this time, no. I mean, as it's kind of been pointed out, we started this project as an addition, and so they were trying not to touch that whole side of the house. I mean, you know, fast forward to today, and I, I think all practical, in all practicality, you know, part of that is definitely going to be demolished during construction and will need to be replaced. But at that time, no, there hasn't been any discussions on, on creating that to be permeable. It, it is very close to the, the property line, so sometimes I'm kind of reluctant to, to, you know, saturate an area that, that is going to essentially be so close to the house, that'll find its way underneath the house potentially.
Understood. Any more comments from any commissioners, or can we open public comment?
One quick question, if I can. On the garage, it, it is set up for four vehicles on a stack system, I believe? Is that, is that correct? On two posts. Does this, this also allows, I think with a 16-foot setback of the driveway, theoretically, you could park two smaller cars on the driveway in addition? It'd be kind of interesting if everyone, everybody has to leave. What is the, what is the height of the garage header at that, given the numbers I just heard for the slope of the driveway?
It's probably 11 seven-eighth. We can use parallamps. Or glue lamp.
Okay. So the height should accommodate the height, the header height of the garage door should accommodate the articulation of the driveway?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no more comments. I don't have any speaker cards, but if anyone else would like to comment, please pass a speaker card to the front. Otherwise, we'll open public comment and go to Zoom.
We have no raised hands at this time.
Okay. In that case, I guess we will just close public comment?
Yep, close the public hearing.
We'll close the public hearing and bring it to the commission for deliberation and discussion.
I'm happy to start it off with the chair's permission.
Please do.
First, I wanted to say I really appreciated the personal touch in you telling us the personal story, and I thought you did a really good job of that, and I wanted to thank the applicant for that as well. In terms of the discussion, I just heard about the stackers. So my understanding is you should be able to accommodate six cars. Is that true? Okay. And then I have a question for staff around trees. I noticed in one of the pictures in the packet that there were some fairly large trees on the rear budding property. Could you talk me through the process that staff used to evaluate the effects that may have, may occur during this process on those trees?
Sure, Commissioner Wright. So when the project was first circulated for review, and I have the timestamp at September 29, 2023, at this time, the city arborist was contracted through Tucker Tree Consulting. And at the time, the comments provided by the city arborists, they are generally the standard issued comments for any new development. And those comments are, as stated, based on aerial photography, so they likely use some form of Google imagery or Google Earth. So that was a comment to be routed back to the applicant to confirm the, if there are any protected trees within the 50 feet, within the proposed construction. And so my understanding is during that time, until the resubmital by the applicant, the city now had another city arborist contracted through DUDEC. And so during this time, my understanding is that the homeowner had reached out to the city and subsequently the new city arborist to go over and plan the site visit on the comments that was previously issued by the previous city arborist through Tucker Tree Consulting. And it was during that subsequent visit to clarify the initial comments that the city arborist had determined that there was no protected trees within 50 feet, and per his comments, the nearest protected trees, and I think this is, these are the trees you are referring to. Monterey Cypress trees that are at the rear of ten twenty-five and ten thirty-one Granado Drive, which is the rear abutting property. And the determination by the city arborist with DUDAC then is that it's fifty-five feet from the tree trunk to the proposed development. So that is the reason as to why there were two comments and a site visit to clarify the issued comments by different city arborists.
So then to understand this correctly, it's been reviewed by two different arborists. They've measured it for the number of feet. I know when I was there looking at the site, that the drip line of the tree was beyond the property line. But I just wanted to understand, could you refresh my memory just a little bit about what that tree ordinance says and what the considerations are?
Sure, so, and just to backtrack a little bit, Commissioner Wright, so my, I cannot confirm if the initial city arborist comments, they had done a site visit. But from what I see with the issued comments, it looks like they had not, just because the comments were based on, or provided and issued based on aerial photography. But the subsequent visit by the current city arborist, that was confirmed through a site visit with the homeowner. As to, as for the tree encroachment and tree protection, it is fifty feet for any sort of excavating, clearing, grading, or application of chemicals. So that's how the city interprets the distance, as opposed to, I think some jurisdiction may utilize the drip line as the measuring definition. As far as the determination, it's twelve inches for the diameter for, and then any grove of trees per the ordinance that are considered.
Thank you. So is it safe to say that two arborists have reviewed the project, one included a site visit, and both have determined it to be suitable in relation to those, that standard trees?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Commissioner Redfield? I had just one quick question for staff. On the setbacks, the garage setback is sixteen feet on the plans, and I believe, I think it's the north side was four foot ten, so just, just under the limit there. This was a development, so I'm assuming that this was pre Pacifica City Ordinance standards going by that, because it was all, so theoretically, they're all in that neighborhood are very, very similar to this setback type. Is that correct?
That is likely, yes. And so the identified garage setback and the side setback that you had mentioned, Commissioner Redfield, so those were determined by staff as lawful, nonconforming. In the case of the proposed remodel in addition, they, in that portion of the work area, they aren't looking to extend that nonconformity. So as such, that's why the, those setbacks are kept.
All right, and I just one other comment. I read the the applications or whatever they were from, from the neighbors. I was very, very happy to see all positive comments on the project.
When the chair is ready, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Do we have any other comments? Commissioner Godwin?
Commissioner? I have none.
It's fine. Prepared to hear a motion?
I move that we approve this project as conditioned by staff.
Is that sufficient for staff for our motion? Do we have a second?
I second.
Can we have a vote?
The motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations.
Give me a second to find my script.
Chair, we need to make a comment on the ten-day appeal period. Do you have that written down?
On the what?
The appeal period?
Yeah, I'm trying to, I believe that I do. I'm trying to find it.
Okay.
If you have one, I would appreciate it.
I've got it, I think.
I'm happy to assist you, Chair, if you're.
Sure, I'm just looking for it. Give it in the. Anyone agreed by the action of the planning commission has ten days to appeal the decision in writing to the city council. Okay, so we can now close public hearings, correct? And we will move to commission communications? Nothing? Staff communications?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I do have a couple of items I wanted to update the planning commission on. As you are all aware, we are having some staffing issues in our department. We are in a very skeletal crew. You actually see our entire planning division here today. So we are working on some interim staffing while we go through the recruitment for planners. And so that's underway, so we will be getting some contract planners to fill in to get our workload distributed. The director's recruitment is underway, and I think from what we know, there's been some offers being made as we speak, so we may know more within a week or so. What else? Oh, yeah, and counter hours, because we are so impacted by staff and the permit tech staff as well. We are, the staff is looking at reducing the counter hours and making an announcement and having a plan in place so we can, we can reduce some of the time that's spent at the counter and spread that time on project review and other important projects. We are currently on our plate. And finally, I think everyone is aware, the city council will be acting on the LCLUP update on next Monday, the twenty-eighth. And we are hoping that we have, we have all the comments addressed, and we should be able to get this, get a recommendation from the city council for approval. So that's all I had, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Just a quick question. I know being understaffed is a big challenge. What potential consequences are there if we don't have time to review things in a timely manner? Could you just refresh my memory about that, please?
Sure. If we don't have adequate staff, we are bound by timelines for certain projects, especially some of the housing projects that we are reviewing, and also the development projects, which are, which are time-bound under the public review timelines. So we are tracking those and hoping that we can keep to those timelines. And we have a few large projects that are quite time-consuming, because we are getting a lot of public input and responding to those comments, so we may not be able to get to respond to all the comments we are receiving and respond adequately to the public. So those are just a couple of things I can think of the top of my head.
But are we in danger of not meeting those timelines at all, or are we pretty much on track?
Not at this time. We are on track as we speak, and we are tracking those very closely. And we should be getting some interim staffing solutions in the near future, within a week or so.
Well, I want to tell you that I appreciate the fact that you're going through a challenge, and particularly the staff that's here and that is putting an extra heavy burden on them. And I want to let them know how important they are to the city of Pacifica and how much I appreciate it, and I understand the burden that they're under. And thank you.
Thank you.
Good, if I may. In regards to the reduced staffing time at the counter, will that be posted publicly across all media and on the doors themselves, so the public knows the new hours until that changes?
Yes, we are developing a plan for that, for the announcements, and also posting them on all social media and other places that we normally post, yes.
Thank you.
Seeing no more comments, a motion for adjournment?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
I'll second.
And we are adjourned. Anyone agreed by the action of the, oh, that's, I don't need to read that again, do I? Cool.